It's six oh three, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, and we're at the work session meeting of the Wentworth Town Council. First thing on the agenda is a budgeting piece.
We can do them by the United States of America and the Republic which it stands one nation under God, individual.
Okay. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the three-minute public comment period. That is to say, any individual that wishes to make a comment on any subject can queue up at the podium and tell us what they're thinking. No takers, okay, we'll move on. All right, item one seventy-five, public hearing for the Pontown Pub and Grove Liquor License Application. Okay, I understand that we, do we have a presenter here? Is there anybody here from Pontown? Okay, I'll let another counselor lead the discussion.
The chief's not here either, so.
What's up?
Chief's not here either.
So, so I didn't check, we have Lieutenant Hammond here from the Police Department. And I checked and he said that there are no law enforcement concerns with this establishment.
Okay, that's all I've been asked.
I do, I do have one question as we do, is the, uh, I see Chuck's names on the application. And as far as I know, according to his Facebook post, he is done with Pontown in six days, supposedly. October thirty-first, he made an announcement on Facebook, he's no longer going to be associated with Pontown. But if that's the case, should the application be in somebody else's hands?
You're asking a question that I don't know the answer to. Is there an attorney in the house?
Well, it says, it says expected start date eleven-one, so if he's gonna be done, sorry, if he's, if he's going to be done October thirty-first, this license is from eleven-one twenty-three, so I think we should table it.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we table the application for on-premises license for Pontown Tavern until next meeting.
Okay, second, table by Elizabeth. Seconded, and is there any discussion? Yeah, I would make a note that we're tailoring it for lack of information. Okay, are all in favor? Director, all in favor, one absence. Okay, item one seventy-six, consideration of legal license application from Pontown Pub and Grove.
I just took that.
I just did that, I probably wasn't. One seventy-seven, public hearing, started to operate games of chance to the American Legion Post forty and American Legion Riders for the period of five years.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Open.
Open.
And just for the council's information, again, I checked with Lieutenant Hammond and said there are no issues as far as law enforcement's concerned with the operation of these games of chance.
It's just the same, there's nothing new here, they're kind of ongoing.
No, this is, uh, this is what we've been doing by law. Would you mind coming to the podium and speaking your name for the record?
Sure, there's a microphone right there.
Should be honest.
I thought it was pretty bottom up.
We want to comment on that. I've been speaking aloud, but I'm Colin Hewitt, I'm the commander of the post. And, uh, no, this is, uh, this license application for both American Legion and the American Legion Riders. Because we have different charges, but we operate at the post for, we do Texas Hold'em, we do Curbage, we do a few different games of chance, so this is for a five-year, you know, this is for a five-year term. Yes, sir.
Quick question, maybe you don't have the, why is only five years? I don't know why we're not just giving you the license to do this. Is it under charter or?
No, it comes from the gaming commission, so.
I just didn't see why we would give it to.
According to the gaming commission's rules.
Oh, no, no, I understand, I guess it was a question for me, most understand, because I know you guys have been doing it forever, and I didn't see a reason why it had to come up every five years to do it, but.
I think that's too short for a point.
Yeah, me too. No worries, thank you.
Are there any questions for the other? Okay. Okay, we're closing.
Okay, go ahead, the person.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing at six twelve.
I make a motion that we accept the application for the American Legion's Games of Chance as stated.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Roy. All in favor? We're sure all are in favor, one absence. Public hearing closes at six thirteen. Okay, item one seventy-eight, consideration of authority to operate games of chance to the American Legion.
Just did that.
Why are these things being included? What? I don't know, we go to one seventy-nine, consideration of land swap request for the American Legion Post forty. I think everyone here hopefully has the map. More or less self-inquisitive.
I just have a question, why, why does the town have to get involved in a land swap?
Because the towns ran the deeds.
Ah, okay.
So I think that we have someone here representing the Legion that will comment.
Hello, hi, everybody, my name is Mary Johnson, I'm returning to Second Street. Uh, some of you I have represented, I hope that doesn't present a concept. Um, I am here representing Legion Post number forty, and also here with the commander Colin Hewitt and our adjutant Bob Dawson. And we also have Courtney and Lou Carrier here, who are the abiding landowners to the post, with whom we plan to have the council help to authorize the town manager to sign a deed so that we can have a change of equal-sized parcel of land, which will give post the ability to improve its handicap accessible area and also stop trespassing when the carrier is on a regular basis. Uh, give the carrier a little elbow room in their side yard as well. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, I think that the sketch that we provided in this fairway clear, we've already lined up a surveyor. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that might have about this proposal, absolutely.
How does that, does that change the temporary parking that the Legion uses on that side lawn? I know, I don't know if it's your property that they use or.
It's, it's the, it's the parking in the back that's been trespassing all this time, not the parking on the, on the side. Parking that's right on the one right there is actually okay, it's the parking in the back that tends to be more of a trespass carrier problem.
But is that going to reduce the parking out, the ability for them to use that as parking out on the side lawn or?
No, you shouldn't affect that at all.
Is, is the property now, um, so I know that there's a survey, but has it been updated? Does it mean so they can clearly know that there's boundaries?
I'm sorry. They should definitely, they're in place right now so that it's clear that the surveyor can see where they could be. I think that the answer to that is, I understand, is once the property and the hearing is completed, their survey, then new boundaries will all be added swiftly and.
Right, that's what I was asking, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the question very much.
Yeah, we're ready for one.
Uh, I make a motion, or suggest a motion, to approve the swap parcel, each measuring forty-three, uh, four thousand three hundred and thirteen square feet, as requested by the American Legion Post number forty and Louis Carrier, and to authorize the town manager to execute and accept the deeds.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, let the director Linda Capra is now attending, all present. Okay.
Sorry, I was late, I was.
So, all in favor? Okay, what director, all are in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am loving it.
You guys, thanks, guys. Happy to hear it. Always good when neighbors are happy.
All right, item one eighty, consideration of purchase and sale agreement for one twenty-three Metcalf Road.
I'll move to approve the purchase and sale agreement for one twenty-three Metcalf Road as recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, is there any conversation, discussion?
There's nothing, there's nothing different than what we have been expecting all along.
Right.
Yeah, we've already approved them, so.
Okay.
Good question, on that property, that's, is that, do we get existing antennas there now? Is that what we're planning to put a new one for each one throughout?
Okay, vote, all in favor? I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Let the director, everyone is in favor. Okay, next, we're down to licensing fees.
We're gonna ask the issue.
Item one eighty-one, discussion of licensing fees charged to businesses, including bars and restaurants, cannabis dispensary, visualers, and transient sellers. Okay, um, we're gonna let Shannon start the discussion.
So I ask that this be added onto the agenda for this evening. Uh, after we reached out to our town attorney and, and my staff, Anthony's, um, reached out regarding the state laws. And so the memorandum outlines what there is, uh, what Earth Keepers have noted was that there is a twenty-five dollar renewal fee for liquor licenses. Uh, we currently have, I believe it's, I believe it's about fourteen hundred dollars, we'll state it, yeah, fourteen hundred dollars according to the scheduled renewal fee, uh, annually for the marijuana businesses. And so, um, they're just asking for a fair and equitable review of that. And so I would like to make a motion, um, that we direct the planning board to review the marijuana ordinance and all town fee schedules. Uh, propose any recommendations that make the town fees more equitable, uh, and have a look at that on November second.
I think we did that, if I recall, and you can check into it. But I thought we increased it substantially because there were only certain amount of licenses that were granted. So that's different than running just a business outright. It was, you know, it's almost like, there's a limitation on the amount of, of, so that's a little different than any business that can open up anywhere. You have a set amount of people here, or, you know, set amount of licenses that you're granting. Those are worth more than just any old business opens up, so you need to think about that, that's why we did it the way we did it.
I, I understand, I'm trying to be fair and equitable, and I was just getting part of that, I was just reading some of this, trying to catch up. But it looks like there's also an additional nine hundred dollar fee that you say, you know, the rental, they have to pay, I'd say the whole restaurant's stuff. I mean, do, do they have to pay something to the state too? Do you know, the, the Kansas people?
So I do not know, but I see that, uh, John Black, I believe, is one of the owners of Earth Keepers, his owner is in the cause. John, is that something you can address in addition to the, the local fee? Do you have to pay some sort of estate fee?
Yeah, we have to pay, we pay thousands and thousands of dollars to the, the state, depending on what licensing tier you acquire. Um, and also, you know, they do random inspections, um, at our cultivation facility and our retail locations as well. But I, I guess I would like to wonder what the, you know, they talked to the attorney, um, did the attorney, um, have any recommendations for you?
Well, John, um, the background materials are in the agenda that, that I believe I sent Cory earlier today. And if you click on that link, you can find the, the memorandum that has the writings of both the town attorney and an attorney for the main business. Uh, I think they pretty much echo what, what Cory has said before, is that under the state law, that the town is not allowed to charge anything more than simply to recover its cost for the processing of the, uh, application and, and the, um, related enforcement.
Yeah, I would add one more thing, we did, uh, contact a separate attorney, uh, counsel as well. Um, and again, this falls with the town of Wilton and, um, with the town of Winthrop, but there is, um, a discrimination, via, I guess you call it a violation or whatever you want to call it, um, just based on the, the, the fee schedule for us. You're discriminating against cannabis companies by charging, um, such high fees. And the licensing part, I understand, there may be limited licenses, but that still does not, uh, ju- justify or warrant, um, the excessive fees based on what the town already, um, has for fees, uh, throughout the town. Um, there are no fees that even come close to what we have. Um, and I can see, you know, if you were inspecting or if there were other costs associated with it, but, um, not at this time.
Any other comments by board members? To the public or the app or subject to this conversation?
I would just like to point out that, um, when we set these fees originally, it was, the concern was for law enforcement costs. The concern was also the fact that it's not federally recognized and, and, uh, legal federally. So we have to worry about people from, coming from out of state, and there's a legal, there's a, uh, a police, uh, presence for that purpose, in case anybody decides to, do something illegal with the, uh, community, I'm not saying anyone, I'm saying outside people. Um, and what's prohibitorial when we set it, we have now got more, uh, cannabis dealers than we had when we first passed the marijuana ordinance. So I don't see how we are, because we have a limited number of licenses, I don't see how we are prohibiting you from doing your business. It seems to be not prohibiting anybody else from doing this.
I, I personally.
I may ask him something.
Okay, you can ask it publicly if you want, um, I'm happy to expect a question from him. I personally keep looking back at the section of Phil's thoughts here in our thing, there's, uh, notes that include fair and equitable. And I'm not seeing fair and equitable in our P stuff for marijuana. That's my one comment.
As mentioned previously, we can have as many restaurants as we want, we can have as many bars as we want. But marijuana dealers only get a certain amount of licenses per year, so therefore that's why the cost is justified.
Any other comments? Okay, so.
I'd like to know, Anthony, did you talk to the league's chief about any type of enforcement, uh, enforcement, but any type of additional cost here?
Yeah, again, I spoke with Lieutenant Hammond, and he said from a law enforcement perspective, Earth Keepers is not corporate. And there's also another cannabis business in our town, and neither one of them are causing any sort of issues as far as law enforcement execution.
Okay, so we have motion, okay, we're with.
I did make a motion.
Okay, so do we have a second? From anyone?
I didn't hear the motion.
Can you reread them? Sure.
I make a motion, we direct the planning board to review the marijuana ordinance and all town fee schedules. So propose any recommendations to make town fees more equitable, propose to the council, have the November second meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Well, second.
Okay, and then any further discussion?
I think it's there enough for this to have it be reviewed.
Yeah.
I think it's, she needs to be looked at and, you know, looking over, um, from Pontown's fee schedule as well on their application. You can see there's pretty hefty fees on there, that's probably not our level, we're probably state level. But make sure that this gentleman in business, you know, make sure things are aligned correctly, uh, you know. Not trying to show anybody way out of town from doing business, but to everybody's point, I mean, these licenses have a premium. Um, they're only allowed to have X licenses in town, so, but I love that, you know, if you want to look it over and see what it looks like.
The other thing they may want to look or consider is, I think at the state level, and I may be wrong about this, but casinos have a, another, I, I bet there's some, some sort of fee or something, because there's only a certain number of licenses that are granted.
They have to have statewide referendum approvals for that, I don't think.
I, I don't know about the Vanguard one, I don't remember if the Vanguard one did or not, I, I know that, I, I think Oxford did.
Oxford, yeah.
But I think also that there's a fees associated at the state level with that, I think, I don't know. So it's something that they need to check into as well.
So, so one third final question, Shannon. Uh, the planning board is in charge of land use issues, so I assume that we, when, I, I sent it to review fees, we're talking about plan use fees.
The fee schedule that we have.
Well, so there is a fee schedule associated with the cannabis, uh, ordinance.
Yeah.
But, uh, but if we're looking at, I mean, are you wanting just to look at, at that or?
Contrast with other businesses as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And what other municipalities do, they should look at that too.
Like, most align ourselves something.
Yeah, so we can align ourselves with whatever they do as well, so.
All right, and, and just to, just to clarify one thing, Jim, on the application, all those fees that you saw on Pontown's application, you're correct, those are state fees.
Oh, yeah.
So for, for a liquor license first, you have to get your local license and then, and then that's the gateway for getting.
Yeah, I just figured if what's there was similar, if they had a similar page, that they had to deal with as well.
One thing, I think when we adopted that ordinance, or that, that license structure, I think we considered all of that. So I'm, I'm pretty sure we did at the time of what everybody else, everyone else was doing, so again.
There was actually a range.
Yeah, there was a range, and, and we were at the lower end, lower middle end, if I recall.
And according to Anthony's previous research, we're still in that range, well within that range, from the high to the low, somewhere in the middle.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, so just as a reminder, uh, the town attorney provided us a list of, of fees from different communities, and also solicited fees.
Let's see that.
For the, uh, the town manager, that was for.
So, so how, uh, does he, doesn't he represent some of these other towns?
He does.
How would, maybe it's worth asking him how the other towns are justifying the fees.
Okay.
Specifically on these, because he should have some input on that other thing.
Again, I think when we discuss this, and I don't remember exactly, but I think when we discussed it, we discussed it because it was something that had a.
It's in the pile of papers on the floor, I know. I didn't bring that today, but yeah, there was a range that we could charge, and that was, I, I think we did in the upwards of the initial re, the initial license was in the upper range. But I think the renewal fee was in the.
Elizabeth, I think it's actually the opposite, if memory serves me correctly, the application fee for a cannabis business sold two hundred and fifty dollars, whereas the annual licensing fee is much.
Okay, I had a bad person, but yeah, but we were still within that range. So, sorry, I didn't.
It's somewhat unusual to me from the presentation of the other cannabis shop on one thirty-five, used to be Tri-State, I don't know what it's called.
Right.
But she put, made a pretty.
Home Healthcare, at Home Healthcare.
At Home Healthcare.
Home Healthcare.
But she made a pretty good presentation when she came and talked to us about licensing fees and applications, the amount of an investment that she had made in her grow operations. And I thought as a council, we were pretty much affirmed that we would keep the licensing fee for marijuana dispensaries higher than what we would with any other one, just to keep it in controls if we didn't have eight marijuana shops.
But the, the other question is, is because it's a limited licensing, is there any opportunity, do you open that up every year? I can't remember, do you open up that every year for, for, uh, folks to come in and actually bid on the licenses, or is it just automatic renewals?
Well, the renewal's not automatic, they actually have to apply for the renewal each year. Uh, and as far as whether or not there's a certain number of licenses, a lot, a lot, I, I don't know the, the answer to that question.
Okay.
Does the state have any guidelines for that, because there'd be, we're, we could ask other towns with this, given this point, this, it's not federally allowed. But the state allows, does the state have any guidance for that, or there's got to be some more, I don't want to be fair, I don't also want to be like way off the map from what other people are doing, but the state recommends, so.
So should the motion pass, that'll be part of the research that will presented to the planning board, they'll live them in their decision-making. Uh, I will say this, um, my few past experiences, there's an office of marijuana policy for the state. Um, they've been less helpful than I would imagine.
Well, and we have our marijuana, I'm sorry, we have our marijuana ordinance too, so we need to fall back upon that. We didn't pass that, we do have one, and we need to use that in, in our consideration. And the board will need to use that, we need, the planning board will need to use that in consideration for the reschedule.
I'm fairly comfortable with the licensing fees we have in place now. To add any more extra work onto the planning board, uh, I think would be counterproductive. Um, and I would like to just see us move forward and table this motion until we can get some more information.
Sure, that's fine.
A couple of questions.
This sounds good.
Is that the right place for the planning board, is it maybe, you know, maybe you yourself, Anthony, do, do the research and have, have the, and Deb help you? And then where maybe the planner, the town planner, look into some of this research versus adding work to the planning board, having you guys do some split work and bring it back to us?
Yes, that's what would happen, Jim, is if the staff would actually do the research and present the research to the planning board. The reason the planning board is, is the proper place for this is, they were the ones who initially made the recommendation to the council, or to the fees and the cannabis support. So I think it's proper to send it back then, if, if there is some reconsideration to be done on that.
With information, yeah.
Get some more data.
Can I make a motion?
I think there's already one.
Well, I was gonna make a motion to table this.
Should we vote on the first one and then make a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Did we already make a motion?
Yeah, you can second it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, all in favor? Okay, motion fails, three to four.
Talk to us about it first time.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Um, I make a motion that we table the issue of cannabis provider fees until we receive information from the town planner, and the information's been passed on the planning board, and they give the recommendations.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, Chair, I'll entertain a motion, uh, second.
I do, second.
You did second, okay, I mean, it will, it'll be straight to the most, all in favor? Hold on, one second.
We in favor?
Yeah.
Let's do, who was in favor?
Me.
Jim, Bruce, Linda, that. Good. All right, now we're down to item one eighty-two, discussion in consideration of appropriating nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, um, one hundred and twenty dollars in surplus funds, and one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars and five hundred, one hundred ninety-seven, five hundred and sixty-one dollars in the American, uh, Rescue Plan Act car funds.
I'll move to approve of creating nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars in surplus funds and one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-one in ARPA funds towards emergency communications upgrades, fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds towards town office and library audiovisual needs, twenty thousand dollars in ARPA funds for a library elevator replacement contingency.
Is there a second? Okay, that's the second, Roy, um, any discussion?
Um, the additional funds, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, that surplus that we had, estimated?
Yes, so you may recall, Bruce, well, you may have been out of town during that meeting, but back in September, the council bid surplus funds, which essentially were revenues above budget and expenses below budget. And so those totaled as nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And so at that time, the council voted to put that into the assigned fund balance for capital reserves, until we could come back with a recommendation on how those funds might be appropriated. So that's what we're doing with this, the directors met, and easily it was sort of a unanimous consensus of the group that the emergency communications upgrades is the biggest infrastructure improvement that is facing the community right now.
I agree.
And, and, and so, uh, our finance director recommended that if we put all, all of that money aside for that project, which is. And, and, and so, uh, our finance director recommended that if we put all, all of that money aside for that project, which is anticipated to cost in excess of one point two million dollars, uh, that that will help to reduce the amount that we may need to finance it some later day, so we get a sort of our biggest bang for the buck by not having to borrow that amount versus financing, let's say, the, um, the purchase of a patrol car. Uh, and so that's sort of what, what that is based on, and then we carved out some other monies to address the other needs, the AV needs in this room and the li- and the library, along with ensuring that we had a contingency for the elevator replacement at the library now. If, knock on wood, you don't need that contingency, then we come back to you with another recommendation on how to appropriate those dollars. Right?
I'm just a little concerned about everything being bundled into one thing, sorry.
Mixed messages, that's okay, go ahead, then Jim's next.
What?
Go ahead, and then Jim's next.
I'm just a little concerned about everything being bundled into one, uh, motion, because like, I think that the fifty thousand dollars, I know that Richard's comfortable with that now, but what are we looking at here for um, audio visuals for the town meeting room and the library seems a little high. Um, uh, also, I feel if we were going to put anything more aside, we should put it more toward the library's elevator replacement, because that's a requirement under the ADA. Whereas the, uh, the current audio visual capabilities of the town office and the all purpose room are not required under the ADA. Uh, we already have everything available for people. Um, so I'm just concerned that this is all bundled into one, like, almost like trying to pass it all as one video meeting.
Uh, and just to clarify, you folks are welcome to, you know, make separate motions on each of these things and appropriate whatever dollars you feel are appropriate, so. Uh, but, but, and just to clarify, this is just the recommendation from the staff, and you guys, which you, you feel is best and necessary.
Okay, James is next, and then it will be Linda, please.
So.
Make sure you listen to that.
I have a question regarding the communication system that you want to put in place, and I saw that it was going to be over a million dollars to spend on it. But that burdened falls totally on the town, wouldn't it, from what I understood? So, so I, I think, to me, to set, set this amount of money aside for that, um, kind of sets us up that we will bear the lion's share of this and not go up to the other towns and say, you guys got anything, we're just going to get spent that way. I'd be not in favor, I, you know, I'd put a chunk towards it, because I think it's valuable, I think it needs to be done, but I don't think putting that amount of money towards it, it's almost a total bill, minus a couple thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, but I just think, you know, I, I, I try to process with putting that, all that into that one basket, until we get some clear, concise numbers that we're going to get from other towns, know what we need to make up a different score, so.
Yeah, and, and believe me, Jim, the thought is, is that we're going to ask the seven other communities that make use of that emergency communication system, we're going to ask them to contribute toward the infrastructure cost of this, but we haven't exactly determined sort of the formula for that, I mean, how do we do it, do we do it on a per capita basis? Probably makes the most, but we haven't determined that yet, and, um, how do we want to receive those funds, uh, from them? So is that going to be in the form of simply our annual fees, or is it going to be some sort of upfront payment? And they may be in less of a, uh, position to bond something in order to, to contribute to this than we want.
I just need to wait to see, see that formula, and to see what's going to happen before I approve anything like that right now, so that's just my big thought.
Yeah, I, yeah, I totally agree, I mean, I, I'm not comfortable approving that right now, I want to know, um, you know, what these other funds are, what, what these other towns are going to contribute, because I'm not in favor of just increasing the fees.
Yeah.
That, that, they, they need to contribute, this is a part of their infrastructure as well, they utilize, and that is something that I think they need to contribute some dollars. If we're going to have to contribute some dollars, they need to as well, and I'm not in favor of, um, and again, I, 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 you know, I need to see that formula before we, we appropriate any of this. I'm okay with the twenty thousand dollars, but how, what is this fifty thousand dollars for audio visual? I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't, I haven't seen anything on that, that seems like a lot of money.
What are we planning?
So, have you been to the, to the fire station and seen their AV setup there at the new fire station? It would be something similar to that, where we would have, uh, more of a smart board up here, and something that would be a little more seamless experience, both for the people who are here at the meeting and who are online, so, you know, so one of the concerns is, is that when we have someone on Zoom, for instance, that the folk who have their back to this screen, which is probably too small for, for a room this size, can't see, you know, what's going on with that. And so what we're talking about are some multiple screens in order to ensure that everyone is sort of on the same page as, as people are talking, uh, and having, you know, frankly, better sound equipment, so we're not, uh, reverbing over one another. And, uh, and, you know, maybe something that is a little bit more sophisticated than the meeting hour, which is really built for a small meeting, it's like a small conference room as opposed to a large space.
But it, that, it just sounds like a lot of money, fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money for.
It is a lot of money, but technology is expensive, especially with the AV technology.
But I usually, I think, we usually, when we, when we see something like this request, we have a proposal in front of us, and we have, you know, here's what this is potentially going to cost, so.
Here's what it consists of.
Yeah, and that's what we normally do some, with something like this, I'm not comfortable just giving a blanket, you know, I want to know kind of, you know, proposal, an estimate of how much this is going to cost without giving just a, you know, here's, here's fifty thousand dollars, spend it how you like.
Fair, fair enough, so let's, let's put out an RFP for AV stuff for the library and the, uh,
Yes.
Uh, in this room, come back and then ask you to, to designate some of that ARCA funds for, for that purpose.
I mean, I have no problem doing it, but I just want to see something that we, on paper, you know.
Do, anyone else? Do we use the, uh, AV stuff at the library often?
Oh, yes, yeah, a lot of community, a lot of community groups make use of that space and that technology over there. And, and think about it, boy, I mean, you participated in the cannabis forum there.
That's the one thing I.
Yeah.
Put you on the top.
Yeah. But, but as you know, I mean, uh, if you were there in person, there's a great event, online, there were, there was a glitch involved, and so, uh, and so we want, we want people, you know, more and more people are deciding to attend functions in that way, we want that to be as seamless as possible.
Uh, one question I have on this, you know, we, we're talking about, we talk about establishing some capital reserves, re-establishing capital reserves, uh, with that amount of money going to that one, one, you know, that communications tower, the thing that comes to my mind is this.
Mm-hmm.
That we spoke about in the comprehensive plan with all kinds of stuff that I don't know, I haven't heard of half the stuff on here. Half the stuff on here has already been replaced within the last couple of years, and we're looking at replacing it again in ten years. Maybe we need to know what the accurate.
Investment factor?
Yeah, capital investment plan.
Yeah, and, which again, the, the thinking behind this was simply that, that's, the, the emergency communication is going to be our largest infrastructure investment that we're going to be making in the coming years, and so to devote as much money as that possible. I think everyone is still, I think everyone's still committed to, to restoring capital reserves, but it's not going to happen in one fell swoop, it's going to be, it's going to be, we're going to be eating the elements.
We're going to be eating the elements, but this isn't, by doing this, we're not really establishing anything to the capital reserves, and you say that we're going to be, you know, this is what we're going to be, the one thing that we're going to be looking at.
Good.
You know, in the next coming years, but we've been warned over and over and over again that Dan's going to be asking for a new fire truck here for two point one million, coming right out. Uh, what is it, what is an accurate list of what we're going to be expecting in the next five, say even five years, however?
Yeah, and, 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 you know, shame on me, because we did actually talk about that in the director's meeting, and we went through it, and Matt talked about plow trucks and and some of his heavy equipment, and the fire chief did talk about, uh, a new lateral truck, uh, and there were some other discussions. And, uh, but at the end of that discussion, everyone was in agreement that, no, we think that, that the best use of these funds was for this, and it's simply, it's simply, again, we know we're going to have to bond that project, otherwise, and it's, it's an opportunity to either reduce the amount in principle on that bond, or, you know, maybe not even bond it at all.
But this will allow us to get started immediately, you know, what is the timeframe?
Oh, so, so as was mentioned in the memo, the first thing that we have to do is we need to hire a consultant who will design the system, and then will oversee its implementation, because we're talking about a really technical, complex project, right? Once built, boy. I think, I think as good as Bill is, I think, I think even he would defer to, yeah, to a consultant, so, so that's the first thing, so the police chief, uh, uh, last week sent me a draft of a request for qualifications for a consultant, and so that's the first thing that we're going to have to, to do is hire one of those persons, and we think that, that that cost will be in the tens of thousands of dollars.
So we're talking about a year out before we get started on this, a year and a half?
Oh gee, you're asking me a question, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but I, I would think that it would take a consultant some months to design a system that pair bill. And then after that, then we would put it out to, uh, an RFP, and gather those, and then we would, and, you know, engage in contract negotiations, and then they would start on that, so. So, maybe by the end of this fiscal year.
So, is that when we have to spend the ARCA funds?
No, the, the ARCA funds, they have to be appropriated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so we, so we still have some time there.
Yeah, so that was my point, money's not going anywhere right now. So, I can put it on, but anyway, I'll speak without it, but the money's not going anywhere at this time, so I think we ought to be safe, just to put a table this thing right now. Find out some exact costs, find out what that formula is for other towns that are, uh, investing here with us, look at some grants, has anybody looked at any grants that could be, uh, appropriated to this project to reduce some of this stuff, so we know an actual number, what we're going to be dealing with, then, then we could say we're going to take seven hundred thousand dollars out of this versus the whole amount, and I'm going to use X for the other projects that may come along, but I don't want to put everything in it till now, and I wouldn't, I'm not going to vote for that, so.
Is that, is that a two, two thing, I'll put it, sorry. Um, so, my only, my only issue with this list right now is that an immediate need is that we do need to address the elevator, that actually has to be approved like ASAP. So, I would, I would like to.
They have funds to do it.
They have two hundred thousand dollars, it's just that they want ten percent, I think, for.
Right, so we just, we need to approve that, like, tonight, so they can get moving on that elevator.
Well, they have the two hundred thousand dollars to get.
We have, correct myself.
So, let's get.
Okay, yeah, that's already in the works.
Um, first of all, when you do look for consulting, I, I, A, I echo Jamie's comment about the agreement, we need to have our planner look into a grant for this. There's got to be something out there, I was, there's got to be something out there somewhere. Um, second of all, um, when you folks do look at a consultant for the, um, this project, please have, somebody needs to contact towns and areas where this person has done this and designed these, because in the event, you know, that this is a significant project, and I want to know what, what history and what towns, what they liked or didn't like about this particular design or whatever this person's going to do, how, how, how they're going to design this, because it's a lot of money that we're spending, and we need to make sure that we got to get it right, I don't want to hear a year later that this, this XYZ was supposed to be done over here and we didn't do it. We got to do our homework, and we have to make sure that whoever this consultant is, that they have, you know, they have projects they've worked on, and those projects, the, the towns that they've worked on those projects for have been happy.
In rural towns.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Our areas.
So that has got to be done here, because I don't, we want to hear anything a year or two later.
You want them to be there.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have to make sure that, that we get it done right, so that's.
So, I reserve a comment, I think, now, and a couple of quick things to say, uh, one is, I think we need to pay attention to make sure that we're holding a goddamn miracle and not just fending it off, number two, if we spend this, uh, we're agreed to spend this, and that's the bulk of the spending that's going to be due on this project, uh, the other towns, the project already have been paid for, except for a couple hundred grand, maybe reluctant, they'll contribute. So I would really suggest that we set up a contribution schedule before we agree to, to spend this kind of money, okay? Um, that's, and the other thing is, uh, given my construction background, the contingency fund, uh, for the elevator is underestimated by ten percent. That project should have at least twenty percent, uh, potential to come in. We should double that. If not, we're going to get constructed. Well, go ahead.
Um, I, I think that the upgraded, the, uh, communication system is dire, it needs to be done. Um, my question is, where is the nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars sitting right now? Is that in an account, uh, at the bank?
So, so we don't have separate accounts in the bank, it's just how the money is accounted for.
Okay.
So it's all in the same account, it's just a matter of accounting for the monies in that bank account, and so, and so right now. So, so right now, because you guys moved and approved it, it is assigned to the fund balance for capital reserve, so it's sitting in a fund balance for capital reserve.
Is it garnering interest?
Yes.
How much?
Uh, it'll be more after our next meeting, because we'll be returning to you with the banking services RFP.
Okay, so is that banking services RFP to contain, you know, because we do have surplus that we don't use. So can we put some of those, that surplus, some of that, those monies into, say, like a CD, nine month CD or six month something? Can we, can we ask them what they can do for us in terms of generating a little bit more money?
We already have.
Okay, alright, just wondering.
And the answer is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, what?
They, yes, so, uh, there've been some banks that have upped their game in pursuing our business, and it's going to be reflected in the interest rates that we will.
Yeah.
That accrued interest that we generate, is that put into a rainy day account for us? Or is it rolled back into the total?
We don't need a rainy, I mean, we got a surplus account, that's the same thing.
Yeah, so, so keep in mind, the interest that, uh, our accounts earn is, is one of the budgeted revenues that we have each year, so anything that is in excess of that is in the general fund, and then at the end of the year, then we make a recommendation to you about how to divvy up those dollars.
Alright.
I, I would just say that I know, right now, with no time commitment or limitation, you can get around five percent of the CD, and you can withdraw as you, as you see fit with no penalty, so we should be doing better than.
Andy, you're stealing my thunder.
Oh my, I'm so sorry.
So, if, if we were to approve, say, half of these, the funds to the communications tower, would that be enough to get the project started, because, you know?
So, so we'll tell you, so, so I think, in order to present you the fullest picture, uh, and, and Bill and Josh will, if you like, but I think what we're going to have to do is, we're going to have to hire a consultant, we're going to have to have that consultant design the system, we're going to have to put it out to RFP, then we will know how much that system is going to cost, and then we go to our partners, the seven other communities, and say, here's how, here's how we likely contribute to this.
Yeah.
Because they, because they're going to be asking the same questions as you guys are, well, well, how much do you, you know, do you want us to contribute without knowing what they're all costing?
They do already know this is coming.
Oh, yes, 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 in fact, uh, Chief Berlin had a, um, had a meeting with all of the fire chiefs that are served by this system, and invited all the town managers, unfortunately, there are only two of us there, and so, um, the fire chief went back and reported back to their communities, this is coming, and I've done that with the town managers, and briefly, for a time, we can all pow out a little bit more about this.
Okay, but when we do put those RFPs out, and we do get solicitation, we, we solicit those, um, you know, those consultants, at that time, before we pick, somebody, can folks do a little bit of due diligence to find out if the towns that they have done projects in, that they were happy with them?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the grading criteria in the RFP will be references, so we'll be vetting all of it, we'll be vetting all of the consultants that were interested in, and, you know, I think someone like Bill will be a, a great help to that, and, and so will, um, you know, I see online, our former police chief, Brian Frost, and he's been very interested in this project, and is frankly far more knowledgeable about it than I am, but, you know, hopefully we solicit Brian's help as well. Frankly, far more knowledgeable about it than I am, but, you know, hopefully this will solicit Brian's help as well, and just ensuring that we get. Not only the best consultant, but in the best system possible.
So, cost for hiring a consultant, were any of those accounted for in any of these numbers? I know that there's an RQ.
Yeah, so, so, so that cost would be part of the, the project cost.
In a different or?
No, as, as part of the, the project cost. And again, so Brian got this one point two billion dollar figure, and I think it was a couple of years ago, it was in the bill. Yeah, so everyone, everyone's anticipation that is that that one point two million dollar figure is actually gonna be much higher by the time we put it out.
By going off the bid, you got more people bidding on it.
Right.
If they know what they're bidding on.
And we potentially have a grant, if we can find a grant.
Yeah, it's, uh, the, the bidding process is serving as well, so.
I was just reading, can I, so please, so.
Go ahead, let's move.
Right. So I was just rereading just the numbers that on, on the appropriations on the capital reserve. So we could actually take those ARCA funds and apply those now. And that would bring our reserve for that communication system up to five hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one, which is only about a little less than a third. Or the projected total cost at this time. Um, and then we could accumulate, as Roy suggested, maybe half of that. Uh, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand to it now. And then get the rest from the other towns, and then put that money, if we have excess, back into our capital reserves. Um, the other thing is regarding. The, uh. The sound system. I'm sitting here and I'm looking around, and I'm thinking. The, the biggest complaints we've had have been from people that are at the back of the room, they can't really hear. And I think the suggestion was made at one point, you just add a couple speakers to the back. Um, I don't, I, I look at other towns like Lewis, which is larger than us, much, much larger. And they have the almost identical mics, they have almost identical everything. And they, they don't need to have a fifty thousand dollar A B system. Um, so I don't really feel the need to improve what we have now, the auto getting a couple speakers. And running some extra speaker wire. And that has been working fine since.
A couple of their screens potentially.
Oh yeah, maybe another screen toward the back, but, but, um, that's not fifty thousand dollars. And, um, I'd rather see more money put into the fund for the elevator replacement. Because the ten percent of the project cost, we're gonna have to finance that down. If we, if we don't get a grant for the whole thing. So I just would like to see. Like if we just hit the ARCA funds.
We already put, we already put the money away for the elevator. We already proved two hundred thousand dollars for it.
Okay, so that, so the ten percent.
It's just a contingency.
No, no, no. Okay, so we can use those ARCA funds for the elevator.
It's not going anywhere. We can do it when, when we get that bill.
Well, no, I mean, we can put the ARCA funds toward it now, just to get it out of the way. And we can put the ARCA funds toward. The communications tower and get that out of the way, and just reserve the, um, part that we would have spent for. The audio visual capabilities aside for now, till we figure out what we wanna do.
But you were saying something about half of that nine hundred. I'm not in favor. I don't mind.
That's what Roy suggested.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. If you folks want to put a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to our, our funds, aside for the communications upgrades, I'm fine with that, but not the nine hundred and eighty-eight. Um, the fifty thousand, I wanna see a little bit more of, you know, a breakdown, a breakdown of what that includes. The twenty thousand, I'm okay for. The elevator. I mean.
But the money's gonna be there. It's not going.
Yeah, I don't have to have a hundred and twenty here. You don't have to do that.
You can say, we approve it. So it doesn't have to be sitting in any funds. It could stay right where it is, though we're ready.
Well, we'll, we just approve it now.
I'd like to see the whole numbers, like you gotta see the whole numbers.
Right now, so, if, if I can interject briefly. I, I really do feel that we don't have enough contingency funds for the elevator. And I don't know how much money we need to spend on A B, because I'm going to a computer in front of me now, and I have, and I have Shannon, and remember to shut my mic off, buddy. What, what?
The, uh. Now, we've already, we've already designated some funds for this, to begin this project for the radio, the communications. Previously, correct?
Yeah, so, so we've been, uh, saving up, I think, like ninety thousand dollars behind. And so right now, we find this. I mean, we have, we have three hundred thousand plus.
So there's enough there to get going with the.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. You know, plenty to, to hire a consultant.
Hire a consultant, and then we can determine what we actually do need going forward.
That's what we have a question of, anybody?
One question? Who, who is in charge of hiring the consultant for this?
So what will happen is we'll have a small committee, um. We'll want Bill on there, we'll cer- certainly want the, the police chief, we'll certainly want the fire chief, we may want the public works director, because public works, you suggested for me as well. Myself, and then we will, I could, Linda said, vet the applications, come back to you guys with the recommendation. And then you guys will approve the contract, because, again, we're anticipating this, this will, this will fall under our purchasing policy, and it will be in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars.
I have one comment. Mr. Sullivan, you're very competent as far as your communication skills. Um, please be very proactive in the hiring of this consultant. I mean, we only go around once in this legacy building, so, you know.
Extensively on the, uh, professor proposal for consultant, and, um, a lot of the concerns that. That we are at are all addressed in there as far as qualifications and background on what we do. I will know that they've done the same thing. Or something similar, probably just something bigger than. Um. Having to go through, and so you guys will see that, must be better than our case, than if we go through that. Uh, with the relevant information. And another thing I just wanted to throw up there is, um, looking at this project. Probably eighty-five percent. Okay, that said, is really going to benefit more to the new pilots. Only because we're covering public works, both of them, E M S, fire, police. Those are the people getting all the new equipment. The other towns, they're gonna benefit by our power. Um, and.
So this includes all the other equipment as well, not just the tower?
Right. Yeah, this is on the hybrid. Um, but it's gonna be an upgrade every night.
But say that.
Oh, so, so Bill is prepared to say this is a true, not approach to the emergency communications that we're gonna. Essentially replace all of the infrastructure that we have to.
It's just a speed, so. When you look at it, you know, it does, it's a big cost, it's gonna benefit Winthrop. Uh, like Bill was just saying, but it's going to, they mentioned the town office, public works, the boss, operating, um, all, the mobile, portable radios. So if every town department, uh, was gonna be benefiting from it, it's more than just the tower. It's, um, M D teams. Which are just computers for like, uh, E M S, uh, offering to fire as well. So that will enable your critical incidents, snowstorm, things like that, where it's all hand on deck, and you can effectively communicate with, uh, each other a lot more than a minute to an hour.
Do the other towns, uh, are other towns able to use the tower for their public works and their bus communications and all that stuff too?
Without it, they have nothing.
They've got their own incentive for those. The only thing they'll be able to use for us really is, we're responsible for the fire, fire E M S, while the events is, anyway.
How about, uh, how about like state police, kind of accounting, do they, are they gonna be able to bounce off it or whatever?
No.
No, okay.
Not this time. And we're looking at being able to bounce, maybe on towers in Reed Field. There's a couple on Reed Hill, maybe there's a couple others. But we're also looking at doing.
Is there any chance to look, to see if Canterbury County, do, do they, kind of, kind of state police, do they have good coverage in this area?
Oh, yeah.
Do they do, okay.
They probably have better than you do.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering if there's any, if we get any sort of funding from them for, if we allow them to use the tower or whatever.
Right.
Yeah. We still have more of a funding from the county, they said, nothing.
The other thing too is, is, uh, with respect to E M S. You know, that is a portion, we portion that out to other towns, so they're getting a benefit there. So with those little funds, a portion of, it's not just eighty-five percent. Is Winthrop. I would say that there's a little bit less than that, because these other towns are benefiting, you know, police and fire.
Yeah, without it, they have nothing.
Right, and ambulance. So, uh, I guess not fire, not really fire, but ambulance and police, so.
Most of the police, though, other than all the other towns that we're talking about are all state police in Canterbury County.
Oh, they are?
Only, only mom.
So, so is it just, so it's Monmouth, and then it's, uh, E M S for all these other towns?
Yeah. And fire. Which is all based on.
And fire?
Fire, yeah. And as Bill said, so all the E M S dispatches are to Winthrop. E M S that then goes to Mount Vernon. Or Reed Field.
Right, but they should be a portion of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, and then all of, all of the fire departments and those seven communities rely on our dispatch services.
Right, yeah.
P, P W, does anyone hit the repeater up here on the hill?
No.
So we, I mean, we have a hard job talking across town with our radios currently.
You're saying it doesn't, it, it, they won't reach the repeater?
That's right.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong on something, you know.
Yeah, cause you yell at each other.
It's all the high frequency, uh, communications that you're enabling. High band. High band communications, that's, will there be private talk around channels? So public works will have a channel. Police will have a couple channels.
Digital, all digital.
Well, we've made applications to the F C C for those licenses.
All we need to license is, but it could be frequency life principles, which we currently already own.
Okay.
And the, and the last thing I have is, somebody, and I don't know, Anthony, who should be doing this, but somebody ought to figure out the percentage of all these other towns and the services that they're deriving. From this communications project, because it is the E M S, what percentage of? That E M S portion is attributed to Monmouth or Reed Field, or, I mean, is, so that when we have those percentages at the very end, we can divvy up. And we can talk about how the costs are gonna be allocated. So.
Doable.
So we have a motion, second, a lot of discussion. Um, I'm not, um, ultimately in charge here in a way. But my suggestion would be to ask Anthony to go, uh, to table this and go back over that motion. To vote, to table this and go, ask Anthony to go back over that motion, and take all the things that we've spoken about here into consideration, now breaking down. The cost, holding some of the money in reserve, possibly increasing the contingency for the elevator.
Why don't we just break up? Break up these individual pieces?
Well, that's pretty much.
Right now, if we can get some of them out of the way, possibly.
I would throw my motion. I make a motion to appropriate twenty thousand dollars ARCA funds as a contingency for the library's elevator replacement, uh.
Second.
Own favor?
No, in session.
Oh, yeah, discussion.
Like, I still wonder, hold on, all of us, let's, let's, where can we get the bill? The money's not going anywhere. It's gonna be here, let's get an actual bill. From the elevator, and when they present it to us, then, then, then we can spend it, because, because if, if Anthony, if Amy's right. And says more, they're gonna be asking for more, right? So let's get the actual number before we appropriate anything towards this. Let's wait until, if it is over, let's address it at that point.
That's fine with me.
This is the actual cost for us.
So let's do it. Let me, let me ask, how, how you would envision that, and so. They're installing the, the elevator, and realize it's gonna be a cost override. So you're warning us before we authorize that cost override to come back to the council?
You're gonna get thirty days. After you receive the bill. You're getting that thirty. So then you come back to us, you have a discussion, saying this week's O B O which was.
Have long of your.
And, and show us what the over, what overage was. And I think it's fair. We all understand. I think everybody here at the tables understand this is important, it needs to be done. But let's get the actual number here on the table, because that's how I'd do it at home, and I think most everybody would do it as well. So if you run a business, you're gonna wait till you get that actual number, then you're gonna pay the bill. That's why you get terms of that thirty, you're in that forty-five, whoever wants to decide, decide it out. But we have time to do this. Let's leave the money in the, in the, in the bank. Until we get that actual number, so you all are doing this again.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is, is that if we do that, you're not gonna say, Wilson, why did you approve this? Thirty thousand dollar over.
Yeah, the approval is still gonna come to us. You're gonna come and ask us and tell us what the amount was.
But that means, that means doing it beforehand.
Well, let's, let's get, get the number in. I don't know if it's gonna be over or not. It may not.
Yeah, well, and so I'll, I'll look to our resident construction expert, but I think we won't know that there'll be cost overruns until they're sort of well into the project.
Correct. We gotta do it, so it doesn't matter. We gotta do it.
I would say that you need to be prepared for cost overruns.
Yeah.
Or construction moldups. I mean, if they open another wall, find out that it's not married, or, you know, make mine wires in this.
Wait.
Do we say stop and wait for the downtown, do we need approval money, or do we have that money in?
We'll have the money there. I, I, I think it's just, you're gonna have, you're gonna do it. We've already approved the elevator. So let's just wait till, like, the overages, what's the actual overages, and then.
All the, all the twenty thousand is doing is just getting a contingency fund. Doesn't mean we have to spend it. Doesn't mean that. If, if there's excessive costs, that it's gonna still be the bank either way. We're just appropriating it for contingency. We're not spending it.
Yeah, and, and I think Elizabeth is right on this. So my hope is that, you know, it comes in, no more than two hundred thousand dollars. And even if you appropriate twenty thousand dollars for a contingency, if we don't spend it, then we come back and say, okay, now we need to appropriate for some other need. But having the twenty thousand dollars still allows us to act a little bit more quickly, should they run into something that was unanticipated, which is, you know. Uh, what do they say about construction projects? They rarely come in on your time and under budget, or on time and under budget.
It tends to lose one of the projects.
I was gonna say, several ones I used to run.
Yeah, yeah.
So what is the timeline in the elevator?
They, they need to get going.
So they haven't even started it?
No, it hasn't been started, but it, but, but Richard has been working with the contractor, and we are on their schedule, so, and it, and I'll have to email you guys tomorrow to find out exactly what they did. I don't.
And how long do they surmise this may take?
Um. You know, uh. I think I remember what Richard told me, but I may be lying to you. Let me, let me follow up on that.
One of the problems with that kind of work is you're in a very advanced space, you can't just decide from what it will be done. The other thing is, it takes multiple subcontractors. And, you know, getting those folks all lined up on schedule, or having that, and then all other issues, the work is depending on each other.
There's a motion and a second.
We, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
This is for the, uh, contingency.
Okay, so, who was in favor?
It's five of us.
Okay, five in favor? Uh, oh. All in favor? The records show that, uh, Richard Jim are not in favor.
I would be opposed.
And, and that's, I would say if they do go over the cost of the plan, that's still gonna be brought to the council.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. We just wait, but they would have to visit again if it's over the twenty, so. It's just gonna be another.
Let's move on before Shannon shut off my mic. Uh, item one eighty-three, okay, discussion of village bench policy. Okay, Anthony's gone ahead and, at that, draw up a sketch of a policy. I presume we, we have, I'll have that in front of us.
I thought this was. I, I just thought this was a great idea. I mean.
Thank you.
Limiting the number of location and, um, raising money and having the renewal. Uh, every ten years, I think that's reasonable.
Anyone else?
I think this is fine. I think this was really, this is done right. I mean.
I just.
I think it's done really well, and I, I, I'm okay with it. I, as long as they're just not all concentrated at the beat, at the, uh, in one area, you know, like the north cross point of the beach, or. They're around the, on the town, I, I'm fine with that.
So what I noticed reading through it is. The first line, that the location of the benches, the language, uh, approval by the council. The, uh. The property of the town of Winthrop be located and maintained accord, according to the council of public works. And then down here, the town of Winthrop retains the right to relocate any bench at any time. The end of that, the town manager will make a final determination. So where, where does it lie, whose responsibility? And then somewhere in there, there's also the public works will place the benches where they want them, so. I think we need to clarify that.
Well, I can think of a good scenario. So like, say for example, in a downtown area, we, we put a bench or someone buys a bench and wants to add it, but down behind the bulletin board on that sidewalk down in there, that area. And then, you know, a year into the future, you guys decide to put in charging stations down there. So now that whole area is going to be dug up, that bench is going to be moved. So the town has the right to move that bench and put it.
Well, I understand.
But I think that.
I don't think it would be done like.
The only question I have is what, what's the process to do it? Be something that they're going to go to Anthony. He's going to make the decision where it's going. Cause it says in here, right, the location of all benches approved by the council. If they're moving it, it's going somewhere else. You know what I mean?
Right.
One of, one of the ideas behind um benches being uh, just steel benches that they have in all of their goal, okay? I, when I first come up with this, I'm thinking most of the benches can go downtown and come storefronts. Okay, but and it's, and we're already crowded at the beach in North Austin. Our benches are all tough to move around. Uh, but if we have enough of all benches, we could set those down there. Uh, the people contribute to the town, town buys the bench, town owns the bench, town controls the location of the bench. So for instance, um, they're, they're, they're heavy, but they're not that difficult to move. So if you wanted to go uh down the Norcross and rearrange things for a concert or, or some other kind of function, it wouldn't be all that difficult to move. I, I wouldn't want to do that all the time, but.
I would caution you against stating that it goes in front of this, because the business is responsible for getting in front of the business on the sidewalk. So like, keeping it on town owned property is one thing. But putting it in front of the business unless that business desires it to be there.
I, I don't think we researched this thoroughly, but it was my. I'm not sure, didn't you have that conversation? About who owns the sidewalk?
Oh, the town owns the sidewalk, but uh, but oftentimes, and I'm not sure what the, what the rules are here in Winter, but the, the business is often responsible for the clearing of the sidewalk.
Right.
On the business.
I think I've read that.
Yeah, right. And, and, and just.
What's that?
They don't win throughout it.
No, it's down.
They don't clean them?
Yeah.
No.
No, not front of this.
Oh, it's easier to pick up the phone and say, hey.
Yeah.
So, so that's a matter of, you know, if, if you want to adopt ordinance.
Yep.
That's what, I think that's in there.
Any ordinance are in there.
Okay, so James, something to be the only one that very hard to see at the moment, I said, he's. Bruce too, so you two next.
Yeah, so you. Wow. And you mentioned, first I have a question is after ten years. What happens to the benches? The, the people that donated and.
The bench stays assigned.
The plaque, the plaque changes, okay? So the town, as you mentioned here at the end, you know, community clarification is the town's buying the bench and the person making the donation is just for the placard?
Correct.
So the town's going to own the bench.
Yes, it's going to be done.
So if somebody decided to have their name on the bench for whatever reason, special need for them, then it's, and we're not considering a oh, but you're saying, so do you have something, five thousand dollars for the donation?
Yes. And, and, and that's not a hard and fast number. It's just something.
No, no, I'm just trying to get it, trying to get all the data in my head. I'm hoping this, so say I don't want to put the bench up there, Kurt, and Anthony because he deserves the bench. If I decide that, I mean, I want to make sure what the cost is going to be and then it's just a ten year term, right? And then from the end, if I don't want to do it anymore, then it's, then the town reclaims that and we pull the bench, what we do with that, so.
Oh, after the ten year term?
Yeah.
The bench remains.
Well, well, because nobody's making the donations, then you just pull the plaque off.
Then we just pull the plaque off.
And the bench just stays a bench.
All the benches are uniformed? They're all the same?
Yes, and I think that, I think that's an important part of this.
I think so.
John, one, eight different, eight different designs of benches and uh uh, and, and at least the way that I have seen it done is the benches are typically not being portable. They get bolted into the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unless.
And it's actually more redundant for the town because the cost of each bench is.
Where, where does the money go?
Well, that would be your decision. I'm sorry.
Hey Bruce, the bench has cut a couple of grand, so that's part of the money that there. Did you have something, Bruce?
No, sir, I didn't.
Okay. Go ahead, Jen.
Uh, just looking at the form for, if I were to fill this out, where would I request a specific location? Would it just be verbal request? Or would it actually be on the form?
It says.
Well, well, since all, since the, that first bullet, Shannon says locations are subject to approval by the Winthrop Town Council. I don't know. I mean, we could add a line.
I can always let them suggest that.
Yeah.
I guess I would.
Three suggestions of where they want it.
Yeah, yeah, requests, location.
I, I would suggest uh having steel or metal benches, not all wooden benches that people tend to like to whittle on and kind of things, interesting things.
Yeah.
Well, Matt, if you get a chance stopping downtown in the whole well, and the, the things we're looking at are almost in the stock pool. I mean, you know, you'll, you'll, you'll have a hard job. Well, I'm sure we do pick up one in it, but they're pretty heavy. Okay, and then we issue them anything, you know.
Yeah, what I'm saying, Andy, is like, it's like a maintenance seat, the seat part, everything. If it's wood, they'll tend, they'll tend to rot or whatever. Boards.
They jump up and down until they break.
These are steel.
Well, we, we added a couple of that, uh, steel ones at, at Norcross.
Yeah.
And those.
He's got a picture of steel, something like that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I put it to ornate, but yeah.
It's all steel, so yeah.
I agree.
We anchored, we anchored those two ones that we put in and they have any problem. On the wood, I guess uh they're power coated and I believe they're around fourteen hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the price that we heard from Paul was about two thousand dollars.
That includes the plant cost, I'm assuming.
And that, and yeah, and that community, the, the town actually isn't involved. It's all a private organization.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, but people think that, you know, it's crazy. My mom stayed like, I'm bringing for a bench at the bench in San Antonio. You know.
Yeah, we're good. I'm trying to find my picture of the bench. I don't know. Didn't I send you?
All right.
And moving on?
Yeah, we're moving on. One eighty-four, discussion of the village.
Let me just, let me get some direction here. So what changes are you guys wanting in a, 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 a singular determination of the, the final?
Just to read, you know, read through it and.
Okay, I'm happy to let you be the, the final word.
I think if you had the suggestions at the bottom for a location, it's going to be ultimately determined by us.
Okay.
Yeah, so then I can go through it.
No, 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 I, 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 I see what you're getting at. So, so we, we can tie it in up. So, but you feel like we're close here then?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think it's true.
And so we've got three locations, right?
And I think it's a great, great idea. Yeah, three locations.
So you just put the three top, you know, in order that they want it, one, two, and three, so.
It's got to come back to us anyway.
Yeah.
And so, and so by the locations, you mean just like either Norcross, Beach, Downtown, or are you suggesting some specific?
I think, I think.
Some specific.
I think they have a specific to ask, but if we give our locations where we already had the benches or providing the plaques, like say these are our, you got, get us your top three, like we want it here, you can't have it here, where do you want it next?
Yeah, like doesn't.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Frank choice, what, right here?
Frank choice? Oh, God, don't go there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, item one eighty-four, discussion of revitalization committee, village revitalization.
Yeah, so um, for town planner Dawn Emerson and I have been having discussions with the state official who administers the community development block grants or C D Gs. And also with Jesse Seer, who is a planner for K V cog, she's actually joining us on this new call uh this evening, just learning about what the options and opportunities are for our hopes to revitalize our village and to tap into some grant funding at the same time. And so what we were mostly told was with a couple of different exceptions that the first step to, to, to getting that grant funding is you've got to have a downtown revitalization plan, which Winthrop actually does. But it was drafted in two thousand, twenty-three years ago. So like the comp plan, it needs an update. And typically that's sort of what plan follows an update of the comp plan. So we could potentially begin working on this next spring or next summer. So anyway, we're talking with, with Jesse, who has a background both in village revitalization and in economic development. She suggested that in preparing to start to craft an updated downtown revitalization plan that we form a village revitalization committee, which would be approximately ten stakeholders who have, who represented different constituencies, who have some ideas for what we want our villages to be. Uh, and they would also engage in the citizen engagement and getting ideas from, from the community. So I think this is a good idea, both to help us with the plan and to help us with uh, uh village revitalization, because I think there'll be a lot of interest in that. And if the council agrees with that concept, what we'd like to do is return to you in a month or so. Maybe at this, the, the workshop meeting in uh November with a charge for the committee and some recommendations about how we go about recruiting members.
Okay, I, I do have a comment here. Shannon and I were, were talking about, uh, stacking, talking, we're not um, some kind of a, a composition or a set of who um, for town committees. And I think we could form yet another committee. We probably ought to get on the stick and get that done.
I think that could be part of this whole process and appro, and approvals. And, and, you know, um, I think Mike Ketchinse here, I think you've got a pretty good model working with the uh, the morning committee. And so I think what we'd probably do is instead of reinventing the wheel, is we take some of what we're doing with the morning committee, just put it down and writing and try to apply to some other committee.
Well, I think that we, we need to look at that, okay? Because one thing about the morning committee, which I'm very sure won't be uh included in any suggestions for a committee and not reflecting any comments on morning committee is that we would like to see, correct me if I'm wrong, we'd like to see a committee, a vice chair. Okay.
I'm not opposed to that. So, so the morning committee, we just left it up to the membership and I just investigated.
Yeah, we've had, you know, and, and that may, that seems we weren't just fine. Okay, but there's other committees where we had co-chair and some things like that, where it didn't work out, which is brought Shannon and I to the point where we need to get some bad side of it over here. Um, where we, we really think there should be some kind of regulation committees. And we'd like to get that done before we start yet another committee.
And I agree, but again, I think we can, I think we can do it all on one bill. So we can bring to you those recommendations along with a charge per committee, if you agree with this concept and, and some ideas about how we recruit the membership, just to ensure that there are lots of constituencies that are represented uh on this body. Um, both demographically, interest, etc.
But general rules for committee, for committees in general.
Yes, yeah, not, not specifically for this committee, but for committees in general.
That's what.
I think that's.
That's an administrative thing. I think that's separate from.
That.
The, doing committee rules, I feel like not committee rules, not, yeah, I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's separate from this.
Yeah.
And, and Shannon's right. My point was that we need to get that administrative issue done, you know, where before we form yet another committee, that's all. Okay, so if anyone uh has input, um send it up, send it up to uh Anthony and he'll send it out to us and send it out to all of us.
Okay, what's the interest in this concept for revital?
I think it's well overdue. But frankly, I think we've had a lot of complaining about not having a decent downtown for many years, but we've had no one to step forward and, and do something about it. So I think it's long overdue to have.
I'm, I'm kind of in favor of it to have a committee look at it or at least evaluate it. I just want to get, get some traction. Great to put it on paper, right? Great to have a committee together and discuss it. But let's come up with viable options and, and plans and actually enact them and put them in place. So I can sit up here and consider the council all day long to the end of the song, right? I want to see some action, I just do something. So we have, have a, you know, program in place and execute it.
Yeah, so, so that's one of the things I appreciated about our meeting with Jesse, and she suggested some things that would be, that she viewed as low hanging fruit. That, that would be easy things that we could do sort of off the back and that would give some momentum and excitement generally.
Get some good eyes and get some people excited.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly right.
I would have to ask if this is something that we would make sure that the comprehensive plan is complete for first, uh, looking at this, it says consistency with the comprehensive plan. So it must be consistent with our community's comprehensive plan. So are we looking to wait until our comprehensive plan is complete and then establishing this to ensure that they are aligned with each other?
No, so um well, maybe Shannon, but the way I was revisiting it was hopefully we can get the wheels rolling on a revitalization committee so that once we are done with the comprehensive plan, hopefully March that we can then immediately have that permits engaged to start working on a downtown revitalization plan. So it's um, so you're sort of, as you're uh finishing up one project, ramping up the other.
Well, I'm going to, let me think about this in three steps. One is, uh, a couple of us need to get together about um, general rules for committees. That's A. B is just talk to establish a revitalization committee is according to the rules with the idea that they will begin at a work and it's not.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we've been.
Yeah, yeah, but I think we can do A and B's uh silent meetings. I don't think we need to wait on B nor A then. I think we could do A and B together, sort of presented at the same meeting.
Well, I just don't want people to come back like to say, well, those are the rules for the revitalization committee. They're not necessarily our, I think we need to be clear.
Oh, no, I, I, I would envision two agenda items on, on the next workshop meeting. One would be the, the committee rules. And then the other would be consideration of a, of a.
And it's not like.
Revitalization.
It's not like they're going to be extremely complex.
No. I, the idea is not to make it too complex.
Yes, exactly. So I think you can establish a different, different pieces. And, and still keep the ball moving forward.
Right. Okay, so, so because you did bother to tune in, Jesse, was there anything you wanted to add to the conversation?
There. Hi all, I'm Jetty from K V cog. I would just emphasize that if we get the process started now, by the time the plans adopt, the comp plan's adopted, we've already got a committee together. We've got some goals um and some ideas that we want to start working on. I mean, we already have the draft or there's a direct, working draft of the comp plan. So we know the primary goals and directions that that's going with. So I think um to not delay the project, getting it going sooner um rather than later. And then when the spring comes, we can apply for some of those small um downtown facade grants, um tree scaping, landscaping, those kinds of things that are that low hanging fruit that I talked, uh, talked with Anthony and Dawn about. Where it really gets the blood moving for everybody and they get real excited because it's, things are starting to happen. It's not just a plan or another committee that sits on the shelf and collects dust and you update it in another twenty years. Once people start seeing some things happening, the momentum gets more moving and people really get excited about it.
So we have sort of a consensus that we would start with uh, we'll do general rules and then revitalization committee at the same time. And we will allow the revitalization committees to start our, send in the contact. And that's how.
That sounds great.
I think it's very reasonable. I mean, it's not like we don't have an idea what's in the comp plan anyway. It is a work.
Right.
Work. Harbor.
Right.
But we, we got a good idea what it's going to be in it. There might be some fine details that we change, but.
Correct.
And since the uh complaint got brought up, um I shattered, I kind of had a conversation, but.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay. Dennis. Yeah, I don't want to be going.
If, if you just.
All right.
Okay. No. All right, uh, one eighty-five. Consideration of winter sand beach. Okay, the ones that took it went off. Matt?
First, I want to say everybody that's been on the sand, the sand is. Because like I've, I've said before, no. Sand isn't just dirt or, we have to add certain.
Mixture.
Mixture today and we need sand, believe it or not. Mixture today and we need sand, believe it or not. But, um, at this. We, we had talked about, uh, between delivery and us picking it up as we had been. And, uh, I could really do, as you all know, what a messy summer this was and, and everything. Was no way to hide on just about everything. We haven't, we haven't put down one bit of rock yet. And we, we're, we're approaching, no. This is getting to be. The turn.
What is the timeline as a side note?
Uh, DOT. They, they kinda go from drop to drop. There's some paving on one thirty-three right now. This week is gonna be a beautiful week for paving. But I don't anticipate that they'll be here paving this week, I, to be honest. And I, at this point in time, we just don't know what's, that actually is gonna bring or.
When do we call it off till next year?
I was just gonna mention that we probably, depending on whether maybe the tenth of November. You know, I, I've been in the city working before and I don't wanna go back again.
It's waste, it's waste.
If the, the temperatures are too hot, no, this, this is DOT formula that goes along with this. You know, if you had fifty degrees and rising or whatever. Um, but that's the sand anyways, uh. I could certainly use the extra time if we did have it delivered, uh, to approximately what. Would figure in, uh, I think about a thousand dollars more to have it delivered. When you factor in the price of fuel and, and, um, van hours, the guy's gonna be here anyways, supply.
That's a no brainer as far as I'm.
Yeah, I, I, Matt's suggestion I've been thinking and I talked to Anthony about, I think it's just a no brainer to have it delivered. And we put the pressure on our guys, they weren't tearing the vehicles and anything else. Which, let's have it delivered, cause it's just gonna be a lot more expensive. We have the finest time to go get the van stopped.
Right, we used to haul, we understand, oh yeah, tiny dump truck for three weeks.
Doesn't even make sense.
So it would be with Blue Rock Earthworks?
Yes.
I, I had a question in response to that. So my question is, if it's been raining all summer and you guys haven't been able to do that work, it's still raining now. What's to say that they're able to actually get out and do that work? Why can't they spend a couple of those days to go pick up sand?
If that's, you know, well, hoping for good, whatever, I, I mean, I'm not a, I can't predict it.
Can you go pick up the sand in the rain?
Yes, from there, we could. It's a little more weight and you have to be a little bit careful about that. But, uh, we don't, this is by the yard, it's not by the ton.
Do you have other stuff that you can do in the, in the interim in the rain with the, with the crew? You have stuff that you can accomplish in the rain?
There's always stuff we can do, no doubt. I mean, it might rain for three days in a row, we got all the sand in or whatever. But we can, you know, I've got to get some, I was just talking to Linda, a while ago, there's a couple of culverts out on, uh. Athletic that have to be done. This, this year, the road is failing and, I mean, I've got the pipe and everything, but I just have to get to the line. And I'm looking, I'm recently, our equipment is not taking on for that, for that job. So I'm reaching out to different people for, just for a machine in, in an operating area.
And I know you guys do a lot of cleaning when they, the vehicles and trucks, somewhere it's raining, we get down to that. So that's, is that too, you're always working down there in the garage.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if it's raining, those guys, they always got something they wanna do, which they wanted them to get over, right? To visit.
I had a quick question, then Linda's gonna be next, let's see, should go out and throw it in. Um, why are we renting a truck? Do we own one wheeler?
Nope, that's gone. So.
So what's the biggest stuff we have now?
Six yard, single axle truck. We've hired trucks, at least one. Forever, except for with that, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's what, we put all our sand in last year. In three days, which I believe was around thirty-two hundred yards. Um, but that was with a higher tri- and I believe they're around ninety, ninety dollars a pound.
With the cost of gas. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the price delivered for the sand, uh, Blue Rock Earthworks at ten dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second. I got a, I got a question.
Okay, you're, you're under discussion here, it's available.
So the, Blue, if you read Blue Rock's quote, they said that the price is no longer good if it's under thirty-five hundred yards. So we have Larry, we're gonna buy some sand off him, we've committed to buying sand off him. So we've committed to buying, clean off him, does that put us under the thirty-five hundred yards that we need from Blue Rock?
Yeah, it's an interesting interaction with Mr. Merrifield after the, the bid opening. And I mentioned that we were ready to make good on the sand that he had put up. Say, you know, just send us an invoice and he sort of blew me off and said, ah, no, this is not, it's not like I'm selling something that's, uh, perishable. So I'm not certain that he's actually going to submit an invoice. Matt, do you have any insight on that?
I don't really know, people are not, I mean, what, we have confusion with that. The confusion was that I told, we talked back in June at this, there had been some talk about a purchasing policy.
Is he aware of that back then in June?
No, he wasn't. And, you know, I didn't think it was gonna move that fast, to be honest with you.
It just.
I feel, I feel bad about saying, yeah, we're gonna buy the stand up here, Larry, and then he made eight hundred or a thousand yards. You know, if it pushed, came to shove, we had, if we had to haul that out of their stand, I could make room at the garage, you'd make it fit.
But then there comes the extra added expense.
Haul it home, absolutely.
Um, the, I would like to see him regardless of, uh, as you know, I had a conversation with him, he showed up at my shop. Yeah, um, but I would like to see him, you reach out to him anyway and say, you know, you, you would like to go good for at least that. Amount, even if he blew you off up there because, uh, I think it would be best to extend. He has provided sand for us many years to pass.
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's a shortest haul, it's eight, uh, no, what is it?
Seven miles.
Seven miles. That is, yeah, factored from the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I reject them again, but I'm only gonna ask them one more time, but you know, we're happy to pay for it, we'll lease it us and invoice. If I don't get a positive response, then move on.
Is that for delivered or picked up?
As for picked up.
So we'd have to pick that up regardless, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we would.
Oh, Shannon, uh, well, he did put a price in for, for, uh, delivered, but it's twelve dollars.
He hadn't warned, but sorry, I just told you that. For Larry Merrifield, that was maybe it was something else, yeah, material, other material.
Are we under any obligation, Mr. Merrifield, at this point?
Other than.
It's more than that, the obligation, I think.
Yeah, right here.
So was this the price that he gave us at that time?
No.
What was the price that he gave us at that time?
Oh, you said whatever it was last year and that's the same price.
It is twelve dollars?
No, no, the seven seventy.
Oh, then we hope for, for pickup, okay.
Because we picked it up last year, right?
Right.
So how much did he give us for a price if, if he, if we had him delivered?
Twelve dollars.
And that's the, that, okay, but this is this year's price, what, what was last year's?
I didn't ask them, although we've never had, we've never.
Yeah, we, we, we did it out, but picked up and delivered, we've always picked it up ourselves, but I thought it was, we wanted our best. So we asked each of the vendors to provide us two prices, one for picked up and one for sold.
So how much sand did we, um, ethically commit ourselves to Larry for?
Between eight hundred and a thousand yards, what, what he has made?
At seven dollars a yard, picked up seven. And then that would, would that put us under the Blue Rock minimum?
That would.
Yeah, well, and I wonder, I wonder, Ben, you think there's any word for negotiation there?
With?
Blue Rock.
For a lesser price?
Yes, no, for a lesser amount.
Due to the circumstances.
You gotta, you know, once we come to a decision tonight, he asked me to call him because he wants to get on.
So let me ask you this, is, is it worth, I mean, for, and that, how, how much are we talking about difference in the yardage?
Thousand yards maybe.
So why don't we just buy it? Do we have time to store it? So places to store it?
I mean, is there a shelf life, am I understanding?
So I'm just saying is if we just can buy, why don't we just buy it? I mean, it's not gonna be that much more, right?
Live up to your obligation with that guy.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm.
Keep, keep, keep that, keep that relationship.
That's right, because he's, he's really good. If I needed him right now for something, he would.
At Blue Rock, at Blue Rock, Larry, Larry, yeah.
And I'm sure Blue Rock would too, I mean, I have good relationships with all of them, all of them.
So it's not gonna be that much more? How much would you think to purchase the extra thousand from making the, to make the, uh, the quota for?
He said about seventy-five hundred bucks.
Do you think it goes up every year?
Say that again.
Does the sand go up every year?
No, it's the same price last year, seven fifty yard from Larry.
But it doesn't, I mean, salt goes and increases, you know, materials increase.
Oh, yeah.
Every year.
So I'm saying, if we're gonna buy it, we can just put it in the, in the. So it'll happen. But this is sand, but not salt.
Does someone wanna amend the motion to, um, to buy the obligation from Larry Merrifield and then buy Blue Rock?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Record show six are in favor.
That's only, yeah, well, we're gonna buy the thirty-five hundred from.
Right.
We'll have a discussion.
We'll get it, I already simply committed. Sand that we promised to get from Larry will pick up.
Yeah.
We, we need to keep our word.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I feel horrible about that. I just didn't think then, this was all gonna move that fast. You know, and I, and I like to have my eggs in a basket, ready, ready to move when I'm ready to move, you know?
I, I guess I can't say I'm entirely happy with it, but I understand that we need to keep our.
We need to come in.
I know historically Larry has been good with, so.
You got a commitment and then, and you can have discussions with Blue Rock. Check with them.
See, I mean, maybe they'll let you do the one down.
We actually have any problem with that.
He may, may not.
He might say, oh, yeah, that wouldn't be.
We don't have any problem fitting up a thousand yards in the dumping site, dude.
I'm, no, we can, sky's the limit.
Yeah, keep going.
Alright, okay, let's move on. Alright. Good, so one eighty-six, consideration and recommendation from the appointments committee. Uh, yes, the, uh, appointments committee would like to recommend Thomas Seem the Wall. Uh, to the cemetery, Winter Cemetery Committee. I know Thomas, I buried three of our relatives and, uh, he's a nice guy. He's got everything in consideration, I think he'd be an asset. Good, Cheryl, I think Martin.
I move that we, uh, appoint, uh, Thomas Noel to the Winter Cemetery Committee.
Second.
And, oh, any discussions?
I just want to make sure he's a probably huge asset, I thought he definitely had my vote, so.
Okay, all in favor? Record, what the record show, all in favor? Okay, item one eighty-seven, consideration of the earth warrant. Then Cheryl, I wanna get a motion.
Alright, make the motion, I'm discussing it, please.
Okay, now, second, second, okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion going on with the warrants here a little bit, I have a question about wanting to land a, just decent verification. Um. For Hall's Collision Center for the, the cruiser, so. I understand if, if they get damaged and we pay the price here. But do the insurance cover any of that or is that just direct payment to credit or is that our, other needs of the insurance company that is under hold?
Yeah, so Josh, do you know if, if we submitted that claim to the M N A?
We did, we've known her back.
Okay, so we need to get into years.
Hopefully we get reimbursed.
I would, I would think that that would be a.
Yeah, no, they're.
I, I would, I would, I would think so, but I've been wrong about these before.
I believe it was a thousand dollars.
There is a thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, you didn't have a comment?
Did anybody have a public comment?
I, I just wanna make one suggestion and, and it's gonna be too late for this here, but this, we didn't vote on that disbursement.
Yeah, we still gotta vote.
We did, I thought we did. No, we moved the question, alright, that's it, so.
Okay, all in favor? Record show all in favor? I think we're gonna talk.
No, 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 no. So, so, uh, it's too late for this year and I won't be here for this for next year. But, um, I was thinking that one of, we talked about downtown development and, you know, making things look nice. Making people wanna be here and embracing the historical nature of Winthrop. Um, one of the things that I've seen in other towns, um, this town in Massachusetts, I'm trying to think of the name, but it's either Avon. Or it's one of those ones outside of Brockton. Anyway, around Fourth of July, they have little, just little white placards that are attached to. Like random telephone poles up through the main street and, um, just being on the main drag. And they were very moving to me because each one had a photograph of a veteran. With his name, his dates of service, you know, when he was born and when he died. And that to me was incredibly moving because it puts a face to all of our veterans that we've lost. And I thought in terms of like, you know how we have people buying the benches? I'm not sure how they do it down there, I'm not sure if the American Legion down there provides those. Or when people make private donations to have their loved one's face. Put over the town, but to see, you know, like World War Two veterans faces staring at you. You know, and, uh, Korean War veterans and Vietnam veterans, you know, people who passed, who died in action. Um, was incredibly moving and, and I think it brought a sense of pride and, um. Um, dedication to the town, cut those out. And I just wanted to make that suggestion for next year.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else wish to, uh, comment on the topic period? Okay, are we on?
Hold on, I'm not.
We have someone for public.
Oh, well, please step forward, be happy to hear from you.
Hi, Susan Grove, and I just wanna say when I read about downtown revitalization plan, I was really excited. I think it's a great idea and good for you. And also I think Shannon, you have considered about starting before the comprehensive plan is approved. So if I were going to be on that committee, which I do not seem to be, but if I were, I would need some, uh. Planning time to read about different grants and so on and so forth. And that would make sense to do that before the comprehensive plan. So once that's approved, we really would be ready to go. So just to know, I really appreciate you folks entertaining new volunteers and to help with that down there. So thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, right. We'll be calling.
Thank you.
I do have one thing.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Anthony, I wanted a little explanation, a clarification, I guess. Through all the discussion that we've had on the comprehensive plan and everything, uh, it brought to my attention just recently. Um, you know, you've been working with KB Cog on and off for quite a while for a lot of different stuff. I had no idea that you were the vice president of KB Cog.
Hmm.
Well, has that always been the case or?
No, not always, uh, once, so previously when I was the town manager of Belgrade, uh, KB Cog approached me and asked me to serve on their board. And the, and the entirety of the KB Cog board. Are men, are municipal officials, either elected officials, select board members, council members and town managers. That's the entirety of their board. And so when I returned to municipal government, not too long ago, they asked me if I would return to the board because of the job that I did, I did for it.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't really. Yeah, I, I, I think, I don't really, I don't necessarily have any issue with it. It's just in the sake of transparency and, and all the interaction we've had back and forth with K V cog, that would have been nice. I would have been interested to hear that.
Yeah, I, you know, shame on me, but I thought I did, I thought I told the council that, but perhaps I did not, so, yeah.
I just curious. Yeah, the, the story, not the story, but just the elaboration, I guess.
Yeah, so, uh, I will say this, that first of all, I really like serving on that organization, because I think it's really vital to, especially in the smaller communities in the service area, which are, uh, Kennebec County, of course, Somerset County. And two, uh, I think it, it helps because we're sort of plugged into what K V cog is offering. For instance, you know, uh, Jesse, who was here, I was at the general assembly meeting, and they were talking about brownfield assessments. And so one of the things that she and I have talked about is, and with her boss, Bill Greenwood, is helping K V cog tapping into K V cog's assistance in getting federal and state funding for a groundfield assessment of the mill. Because if we're ever gonna revitalize that mill, there's gotta be some, you know, environmental assessments done of that place. And I think just having those sort of connections and being in the know, uh, allows me an opportunity to sort of.
Yep, I, I think.
Use that to, to.
Oh, I'm sure, I, I can definitely see the advantages. The only, my only concern is the interaction between mainly with the comprehensive plan, that the, their involvement with K, through K V cog. You know, how much we're relying on them with a comprehensive plan, it would be nice. I would have been interested to know that you were a part of that organization.
Yeah, well, and keep in mind, K V cog was hired a year and a half before I got.
Right.
Uh, with that project.
I don't, I, um, you just.
Yeah, unless I will say this, Roy, when I call it, they're kind of attentive.
Well, that's, that's, that's one of those perks.
Yeah.
Exactly, when you call me.
Are you dead hutton?
Yeah, I think it's just important to know, he towards what, we're laying, laying on the table. If something comes to take, something comes to light for us, that we're at least aware of it.
Okay. So are we ready for a town manager report?
Yep, yeah.
Speaking of the comp plan, uh, uh, there were a lot of demands made on the K V cog planners' hours, uh, before I became involved, uh, sometimes weekly meetings. So we are out of hours on our comp planning contract. And so Joel Greenwood called me last week and said, hey, you know, in order to properly finish this, we need another twenty-five hundred dollars. So I'm looking to, to tap into, again, the contingency, but unless you can find a better place to pay for that, but I just wanted.
I'm fine with that.
E-books to know. Uh, speaking of money, so, um, you will recall, I was in contact with an engineering firm about what the cost of doing an engineering study that would help us in our capital planning, when it painter roads, sidewalks, we cost. And so I've gotten a figure back for that, it'll be approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. Of course, we would still want to put this out to form our R P. Um, we have a paving capital reserve, but it's pretty much spoken for. But, you know, if you're looking to spend something like ARPA funds, or a, or some of those capital reserve funds that we were talking about earlier, this might be, uh, an opportunity to use those funds for this sort of need.
How much is that doing?
What do you mean?
How, how much you, when you say road and sidewalks, the thirty-two thousand?
Oh, no, this is just, this is just engineering's coming out, evaluating the conditions of the roads and prioritizing. Yeah, just prioritizing what needs to be done, what the high needs, medium needs, lower needs are. Uh, proposing some repair and maintenance approaches to that, and sort of helping us get a, a, a plan in place so that as we move forward, over the next five, ten years, we know exactly sort of what we're doing with our, so. It is just, it's been putting some structure to, uh, to our road, uh, repairs.
Our process, right.
Yeah, but I obviously don't wanna go through the process of doing an R P if you're boxing thirty thousand dollars per console. Get it out.
Considering that we, we actually had, um, issues with, when we were doing memorial drive, we did it better. When we got a consultant in, in engineering to tell us about it proper, we do that right. And we haven't had to have any washouts or repaves or covers over, I would think, right? It's been good since we got it done, right?
And we use mainline over roads.
Yeah.
A free.
Yeah, and that was, you know, that's something you can talk to Matt about, I mean.
I would refer to Matt a little bit about it, and then his, his, his real house, and he knows the roads, he's lived here pretty much all his life. Knows it, and, I mean, if he just spent thirty thousand dollars or something, he already patrols on a daily basis.
Well, I, I think, I think Matt does a great job, but as, um, as I told you, one of my first impressions of Winthrop was totally how these roads are bad, you know, they need, they need some attention. And, uh, and so I think maybe a fresh set of eyeballs looking at the roads might, might present us with some ideas.
How about any current plans? Do we have any current plans? Are they five-year plans, ten-year plans that we've kind of put together?
No, this, so, I've got some data that I, I've gotten from, it's through main local roads, it's, uh, it's old, it's like two thousand sixteen, I think. That's got some, some of the roads, roads can change from year to year. You can't say, okay, we're gonna pave Turkey Lane again in ten years. It may, not particularly that road, because it's decent, got decent surface to it, but you don't know what's gonna happen, you know, fourteen thousand, six feet eight one year. Silver road just goes to pieces, and that's gotta be visited directly or right away.
But do we need to spend this on a consultant?
Okay, you already, you're looking into it, I think it's just like, you have to try to hold the plan first, you presented us. Might.
That's what we consult for.
Yeah, but he says he already uses a consult company as a proxy to take.
Well, it's, uh, it's main local roads, it's.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that, no competition.
But again, I mean, uh, as Matt said, that data is, is old, so I don't know that we can rely upon.
What would it take to, to update it?
They don't have, they don't have another program.
They don't have, it's, so it's a one-time program?
For that, for main local roads, yeah.
Yeah.
So they have two thousand R M S, uh, two thousand eleven and two thousand sixteen, that's not many. Beyond that.
What is, like a grant where something?
No, no, it's a free service that the state and Maine offer.
It sounds like it's useless to me. Like, like a lot of.
I imagine that the process of this would be similar to what, like a tax assessor does, by going up and down every single road across the end route, and is there an estimated time, Warren, or is that something that would be put out in the R P to try to estimate how long it would take to get something?
Yeah, you're exactly right, but it wouldn't take as long as you might think that it would. I mean, we do have fifty-six miles of road that we, uh, that we maintain. And so, um, uh, so they sent me a proposal. And I don't recall exactly what the timeframe was in, but it wasn't, it wasn't an exorbitant amount of time. I mean, they, they jumped on pretty quick.
They're hiring themselves, and they're looking at it this year, giving us forecasting for expert, gives for expert, a tenure plan? Or we're doing this year to year, or how are we, how are they evaluating and saying, pushing it out, I mean, they get pushed out and saying, this is your next ten-year plan, this is how we see this as supposed to lie out, or five years out. Um, versus us having a consultant every other year, or, or each year.
This is the one-time plan, and again, the.
What, what did they forecast?
And, well, it's priority, so you had your, your high priority roads, and here's what we recommend be done with those roads. Your, your medium priority roads, your full priority roads, here are the costs, because that's obviously gonna factor into maybe some high priority roads and medium priority roads in the same year, depending upon how the, the mathematics of that works out. And so, again, I think it just gives us more structure as we're moving forward on how we can systematically improve roads as opposed to, you know, just sort of picking out a few roads each year.
This seems an awful lot of money, huh?
It is, but you're gonna, but you're gonna be an engineer's expertise on this, and, and when you're talking about fifty-six miles of road, and let's say the cost is, I mean, you know, this was just one firm's estimate, but let's say it was thirty-two thousand dollars, then, you know, it's less than a thousand dollars per mile, it's like a hundred dollar per mile.
Are they looking at like road substrate and ditching and all of?
They, they, yes, it's not, it's not, yes, and sidewalks, and it's not just a matter of the road, uh, surface, but the, the maintenance of those roads, which are some of the things that you mentioned, ditching, uh.
Does the estimates, like what you, you, you just said, it would estimate it, are they estimating everything for that price? Sidewalks?
Yes, they, they.
All of the reconstruction of the roads, you know, when we get into the substrates of the roads to, you know, is, is, is all the, all that included in the estimate?
Yes, with each, with each project. On there, they, they provide an estimated cost, now, you know, it's an estimate, and eventually the estimate won't, it won't be true. But at least it gives you, at least it gives you an idea about, about how much, you know, you can anticipate spending.
So Anthony, this, um, thirty thousand dollars survey, does that include zoning sampling of the substrate? I mean, you can't just walk down the road and be bothered with what's under it.
No, they're not, they're not doing any core sampling of, of the roads.
They put on their X-ray glasses.
I mean.
Well, I mean, there is, there is actually technology available that, that.
Oh, sure, there is.
More information than you might anticipate simply by driving it over.
I mean, you, you've done the priority prioritization of the roads, correct?
Yeah.
So, so why, I mean, you know.
Do we have that anywhere?
I've got it, you know, I've, I've, I've got it, I mean, I can, I'll try to.
We had a.
No, you've given us.
Yeah, but that was just a favorite schedule for this year, then.
For this year, right.
I'm wanting about like a five-year plan.
I, I want to think if we, if we can get it to, if we can pave the roads that are on the list on the schedule for this year and budget the same amount for next year, we're gonna be in really, really good shape. As far, and then we can like start over and hit like, uh, Ollois Road, for example, that's, that's, that a long time. Or to tell about failing well. I love.
How many?
Well, that's another one, that's got somebody. Maybe one of them could be there.
How many of those roads do you anticipate that would benefit from having a consultant and then giving actual engineering's, uh, recommendation?
Fire, as far as it. If they can, you know, if we, if they did want a little test, test sample of material or something like that, or, I mean, it would, that would be helpful, uh, I think I have a pretty good eye for things that, uh, okay, this needs to be, this section here needs to be ditched out and so on, so forth like that, um. For the most part, most of the roads that, I'm not gonna get to, uh, ditch like the narrow park road this year, it's gonna be paved by everything we're doing this year, it's a heavy shim, it's not, it's not finished. Help. It's just trying to get the roads back, and we had this discussion with, uh, all states. Hey.
I'm, I'm kinda, uh, feeling more like we should just go out and match schedule rather than spend another thirty thousand dollars.
I'm in favor of spending thirty right now.
No, me either.
One thing I did mention to Anthony too, is what, I would not be opposed to a, uh, uh, road training for, if people.
Yeah, that's a, that's a recommendation to the com.
Right, I mean, the more eyes and, and, you know, thoughts and.
Valuation.
Because there's, there's lots, I mean, there's lots of really good people in the town, which are, that know the stuff about, you know, construction and things like that, you know, and I'm totally open to listening to anything like that.
Yeah, if we don't spend thirty-two thousand dollars, that means we have it available for more paving, theoretically, and more emergencies because of climate change, we never know when a road's gonna, we don't know what's gonna happen. You know, the roads, we've seen it all around the state in the last five years, with roads just completely collapsing. They happened up in what, J? This past winter?
And, you know, and we, I still have to get, we're gonna, we've replaced one of the pipes at Washington earlier this year. And I've got another one scheduled for Thursday that we could do ourselves. And then, and I'm still getting some prices from people, so the two big ones are on halfway road there. And that was, that was stuff that, you know, I hadn't really planned on, and she has.
I have thirty-five thousand dollars.
Hey, how about a move on? So, as I've mentioned earlier, bring the bank contract to you at the next meeting, eleven-six, and, um, very pleased with the, uh, the proposals that we're doing, so. Uh, as I said, the banks up their game, just a reminder that, that meeting, the next meeting, will be in the small conference room, because this room will be set up for the election chapters the next day. And if you haven't picked up your absentee ballot, they're available through, number two, the second. And so far, we've had more than four hundred ballots picked up, which is, which is amazing.
All from Winthrop?
Yeah.
Again, again.
Maybe a heavy writing, again, it's a void. Uh, on Wednesday, the planning board is gonna meet, and one of the things that they're gonna consider is, uh, an amendment to our zoning ordinance to accommodate L D two oh oh three, which is the accessory dwelling unit language that the state is now requiring us to have in our ordinance. And so then we're gonna be moving that forward to you guys, so that we can have all the public areas and, and considerations, because we need to have that legislation enacted by January one. So, so that's on, 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 more of the slower roll. Um, we've talked about this a little bit before, but, uh, foreclosed properties, we actually have seventeen of those. And, uh, and fortunately, the two that have the most value, we have confirmed that we've crossed all the i's. Dotted up, crossed all the i's, dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. And so we got the R Q out for broker services, which we need to, to do. And so now we need to send a dining day notice to those former owners that, that are gonna be putting up that property up for sale.
Anthony, there's no tax revenue that's passed to one of the property.
So, oh, I don't know the two, all of them, but the two, but the two that are most, and most of them are really small, uh, blocks. But the two that are most valuable, uh, one, the, um, the, the legal taxes, taxes, and, and excess of twenty thousand dollars. And then the, there's another one that is in excess of fourteen thousand.
Yes, that's, and just so I understand it correctly, are we, the money that's, we collect our portion and then it has to be turned over to the current owner.
To the, yeah, so, so those foreclosed properties belong to the town, so to the provider one that we foreclosed off.
I guess, and this is, that is correct.
So, so, but it's, but it's not only taxes, taxes, interest, and any sort of associated costs.
Sales, expensive, yeah, 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 if you want it, you might as well get it.
So what we're gonna do with those other fifteen is we've gotta go back and take through some records to see if we have.
Yeah, that, those are all in quite a development.
Yes, that is true, and, um, and so far, what we have found is that, um, there's a lot of legwork that's gonna need to be done to ensure that we've met all the requirements needed to foreclose on those properties. Um, speaking of insurance, um, we got a good outcome on the library boiler, and that D M A is going to cover that cost, so we're only out of a thousand dollars. That was, that was good news there. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, uh, we've already begun, uh, orienting our, uh, new council member, who'll be, unless there is a big writing campaign, we're taking Elizabeth's place, that is Erin White, and so he met last week with the police chief and has met with the town clerk and, um, and the library director, and we have some more, uh, orientations. So we're trying to get him prepared so we can hit the ground running with you guys as soon as he takes office. So, that's my report.
I have one question, if you could follow up, you know, one of our other policies, is that Annabachuk building, have you figured anything out for that?
Yes, Matt, I hope, that last weekend, we're, we're cleaning that up, it's starting to name for a, a silent auction. And I was going to, uh, schedule a tour of that, like, we have a linky agent, agent, and, um, I don't know about you, I'm hungry.
I'm hungry, too.
I have, I have one question, I've heard from a couple of our constituents with regards to speeding on Route two oh two east and westbound. And they've asked for additional patrolling, I'd left two messages for the chief and have gotten no response. So if you could please mention that to him when you're talking to him?
Luckily, he's right in manacy right there.
Fortunately, Josh is here, so we can deliver the bitter pill. They say that the speed is excessive, and they've asked for increased patrols along that two oh two to hammer speeders, especially during school hours. along that two oh two to hammer speeders, especially during school hours.
Mom does a pretty good job of picking them up.
They're all over the place, I'm on them, with one car, I saw, we police staffed them.
I live on one thirty-five south, and I have two school bus stops almost right in front of my house, and they almost, one in every ten cars goes past. Okay.
I'm a we adjourn.
That's all, that's all, well, that's all, well, good, but I'm not ready to adjourn, I have three quick items. Okay, um, first, uh, Mike, first of all, the rep committee contacted me, and he's looking for sort of a rec area for young people. And the thought came up, this is always a come, uh, come, the come plan, okay, and the mill, uh, using the mill's old office building for that, we were talking about changing the sod on it. Okay, so maybe when we get talking to the mill, we could talk to them about that.
Have you been in that building?
Hmm, no, not recently.
I have.
So, well, it's, it's something to talk about.
Old and asbestos.
So I'm gonna try and make this quick, okay, so the, the next thing is, um, the, uh, the ponds at the end of Morton Street, um, the rep committee actually has tried to make an ice skating pond, uh, and it did not work out. At one point, we had the, the mill owners permission to use those ponds, but we had to hold up because we weren't sure about environmental issues with that water, and just because it's settlement on, but I'd like that to go on.
What? I mean, not freeze.
Yeah, yeah, but we need to check it out before we establish a use like that. It's a great spot, plenty of parking, power's available, too bad we can't use it, but I'd like that to be in the gun lanes. Okay, and the other one is to pass through, uh, wood through down, down with the, along the mill stream. Also like that to be in the come plan, and I think Shannon probably backs me up on the last two, the first one I didn't discuss.
When are we gonna have more discussion as a council on the come plan?
Big question.
So, all of the chapters and tables that Jennifer's ended to be come plan committed, and there are only two chapters left that, uh, Pat Lad and Jessica Cobb and I worked on last week, and I think there was consensus on how to report, so Jessica's working on that, and as soon as she has that done, we'll share that with everybody, and at that point, we'll be ready to start having some, uh, some public meetings and, and public hearings and start moving forward on that.
So. Will you talk to, please talk to Pat and Dawn about those three items, uh, what were those again? I'm just. You had a short-term memory conversation last week, I'm like.
All right, move adjourn.
Three seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're up till we all happily adjourn, going on a merry way.
One thing I just ordered, I'm looking for, if anybody knows where they might be in place within a couple of miles, a pound, two to three miles.
We got a machine to move it, that's push it over?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
They get it, they pull it over, I might have.
Who is a gra?
We get us a guy to snow it out. We get us a guy.
There's already quite a hill there. Snowboard. You know, it's kind of like, you know, like. If there's any.
Grammy spray.
Oh, I'm welcome. If we made it great again tonight, that's all.
Behind the building, down over the, uh.
Really decent.
And they don't let you do that down, like, the ramp, it's already changed, I'm going to the new Inabetra. Like, I know there's snow.
You can, you can take a fairly low.
Oh, yeah, it's fairly low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you may be able to talk to her, even your mother, I don't care if it goes on my front, you know, whatever, but.
Oh, yeah.
In there, in beside, right down beside my property, going in.
Yeah, thanks for figuring out.